We'll call this meeting to order. All rise. Oh, yes, so yes, this county commission meeting in Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. Our pastor tonight is Pastor John McLendon, the senior pastor of Godwye Church, 100 Godwye Court in Hendersonville. He's been in full-time ministry for 39 years, a graduate from Trevecca College with a degree in Biblical Studies, and received his master's degree from Fuller Theological Seminary. Professor McLendon, thank you for offering our invocation tonight.
It's a privilege to be here. Let's pray. Father, Lord, you said that if anyone lacks wisdom, we need to ask you because you can give it generously. And so, Fathers, we pray tonight. We just ask for wisdom. Lord, for our county, Lord, for all the cases that will be brought before this commission. Lord, you said that there is wisdom in a multitude of counsel. And, Lord, for all the different perspectives that are here tonight, Lord, that we would be able to listen with respect here. And, Lord, that you would just give great wisdom to every decision that's made, that it would bless our county, that it would be good for our citizens. And so, Lord, we just ask that you would be here. You said when two or more gather, that you also join us. And, Lord, you take from what is yours and make it known to us. Lord, let that happen here tonight. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's check our roll.
Roll call is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your presence by pushing the green button.
Mr. Driver's not here. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. You have your regular and consent agenda before you. Is there a motion to approve our regular and consent agenda? This is a motion made by Commissioner Foster, second by Commissioner Graves. Seeing no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your minutes are in your packet. I'll wait for a motion. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Gomenden, for two meetings, yes, for two meetings. For our regular August meeting and special call September 4th meeting. See no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak to an agenda item?
Anyone wish to sign up that has not already?
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford. As we move into announcements from the chair, let me remind everyone, since we're a new commission in our first full meeting, just a couple of rules as we go through the year. Just a reminder, when we have public comments, they're five minutes. Mr. Kemp will time and will give a one-minute heads-up to the speaker. Also, you know, as with our rules of decorum, all comments are directed to the chair, and we avoid any disparaging remarks about another citizen of Sumner County or elected official. So we'll just remind everyone of that. As we begin our new commission year, your veteran service reports are on your desk, and we have some certificates of recognition. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Wright. Yeah, if we can get our recovery court people to come on forward and join Mr. Wright. Yes, sir.
A resolution recognizing September 2018 as National Recovery Month. Whereas September is National Recovery Month, and Sumner County recognizes that mental and substance use disorders are significant issues affecting communities nationwide. Behavioral health is essential to overall well-being of all citizens, and recovery in all its forms is possible. And whereas National Recovery Month supports the belief that prevention works, treatment is effective, people can recover from mental and substance use disorders. Praises the contributions of treatment and service providers who strive to sustain the recovery of persons in need of help. And whereas National Recovery Month presents the opportunity to educate the community on issues related to mental health and substance use, and celebrate health improvements and achievements made by individuals in recovery. Therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session on this, the 17th day of September 2018, that this body hereby recognizes and celebrates National Recovery Month, and encourages all community members to participate in activities that promote health, recovery, and mental well-being. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on in the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to the Recovery Court of Sumner County. Thank you all.
Is that a motion, Mr. Wright?
That is a motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Chris Taylor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
I know y'all don't want to stay long. I'm not going to keep you, but in a minute. I want to thank this body for recognizing the importance of recovery courts and educating the public about this problem. The very first thing I saw when I walked in the building over general sessions this morning was a lady sprawled out on the floor. They called the medical staff from the jail. They had to call the EMS to come in. She either had an overdose of meth or heroin, and she was in bad shape. Had we not had the medical staff there, she could have easily died right there on the floor in the building. On a brighter note, tonight at our drug court meeting, we celebrated several of our participants having one year clean and sober, which is a milestone for a person with an addiction. So I appreciate you recognizing the importance of educating the public about these kinds of problems. They are real. They are many in number, and they are very serious these days. Thank you very much.
As Commissioner Sullivan comes, let me make an announcement that I mentioned that your veteran service report was on your desk. He is out with a knee replacement surgery, so we'll get two reports next month.
Okay, if I could have the representatives from the Holiday Fest to come up and join me? Christmas is almost here. Good. How are you? I have a resolution declaring November the 1st through January 31st as Holiday Fest in Sumner County, Tennessee. Whereas the holiday season brings joy and hope to us all, and Holiday Fest with many community activities helps us to appreciate the true spirit of this special time. And whereas established in 2007, Holiday Fest has become a Sumner County tradition that honors creativity, charity, volunteerism, and community pride, and welcomes locals and visitors alike to share in food, music, dancing, as well as arts and crafts that make our county so unique. And whereas in Sumner County, we all look forward to celebrating Christmas with friends and neighbors at Holiday Fest to observe this magical time of the year and this season. Community and tradition, generosity, and much shared joy with festive events, including the Christmas Parade, the annual fashion show, Christmas tree lightings, breakfast with Santa, the boat parade, St. Nicholas Ball, and the Appalachian Christmas storytelling. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in the regular session on this 17th day of September 2018, that this body does declare that this year's Holiday Fest will begin on November 1st and continue through January 31st, and encourages all citizens to participate in these special events to experience the spirit of giving for our county. And be it further resolved that this resolution is to be spread on the minutes of this body, and the clerk is to furnish a copy of this resolution to Ms. Linda Evgen. And I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Sullivan, second by Commissioner Ring. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. There's a couple of dignitaries I want you to meet. Every year, the nonprofit community nominates a person or people, our king and queen of Holiday Fest. And this year, it's the McNolies. And we're really excited to have Rachel and Tommy. Also, we have a royal court, and that's Irene and Toni Calderon Wave, and that's Jonathan and Tammy Hayes. And also, this year, we have honorary chairs of the St. Nicholas Ball, and that's Dr. Lois Jordan and Jonathan Hayes. So lots going on, and lots going on here in Gallatin, as well as in Hendersonville, as well as in White House in Portland. And we are thrilled that we've been able to do this for 12 years. We've given over $80,000 to the charities every year, and we're really thrilled and honored to get this proclamation. And we expect to see all of you at everything.
Yeah.
So let the king and queen lead us out of here.
Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my honor tonight to recognize a couple of people. If you two would come forward, Mr. Miller, Mr. Douglas. I want to start off by saying that this is kind of a bittersweet moment for me. We're losing not just a great, but a fantastic EMS director. And we're going to show our appreciation, but I think a lot of Keith Douglas. He's done a fabulous job. He's moved the needle forward. Our first responders, I consider the finest in the state and the nation. These are committed men and women who do a fantastic job and have saved numerous lives. I can't tell you how many people they've made an impact on. Having said that, I think we owe Keith a loud applause and a really debt of gratitude. So let's give him a hand. Having said that, he's leaving us, and I wish him all the success. He's going to do great. Yeah, come on. Checks in the mail. But with all things, all good things eventually come to an end, and then we start over again. So tonight, I'm very excited about our new EMS director, Mr. Greg Miller. Mr. Miller, you're coming from Sevier County, Gatlinburg. He's done a fantastic job. He's going to do an even better job here in Sumner County. I want you to know him. He's going to be on the job Monday morning, and I'm very excited. So would you like to introduce yourself to the commission, sir?
Absolutely. Thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, and Mr. Holt, I feel like I need to be wearing one of those hats. You just recognized the Holiday Fest, and I've been to the top of the mountain, and now I get to come to God's country. So I'm excited about this opportunity. And what you just said could not have been truer. Mr. Douglas and I have been friends for several years, and you do have an amazing EMS department here in Sumner County. So I know that I've got some great shoes to fill, but as Mr. Holt and I had a conversation, my job is not just to maintain status quo with what has already been established. It is to continue to push the same way Mr. Douglas has, and that is going to be my objective, as well as with our staff. And there will be no doubt about it, that Sumner County will be the best emergency medical service, not just in Tennessee, not just in this section of Tennessee, but in the entire southeast portion of the United States. I'm excited about this opportunity. It's been exciting already to meet some of you new faces. And I couldn't be here without the support of my beautiful wife, Carla, and my son, Austin. If you look at my wife, you can tell I far outpunted my coverage. So I'm thankful for that, and I'm thankful for this opportunity. And I can't wait till one week today to get started. It's easy to say something. I'm ready to get to work. But thank you for this opportunity.
You got to go out with a bang. Your consent agenda is before you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Graves. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rhodes. I see no discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Your written reports are on your desk. Do we have a motion to approve our notaries?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Shell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kruger. Let's vote.
Notary applications on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Seventeen votes are entered. Twenty-two votes are entered. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? With 22 affirmative votes, the notaries are approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Committee on Committees. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Chairman. Committee on Committees met in regular session tonight, September 17, 2018. We have a list of things for the record. I will go through them. For the new commissioners that are not on committee on committees, we, the majority, and you heard this a little bit last month, but there are a host of other committees that mainly come through the county executive's recommendation. You've seen those on the website hopefully by now and heard about them. So this will be a little busy for a day or two through the next few months, going through getting all the new commissioners in places, and then it will slow down. But for the record, we always will list what those are. The Sumner County Joint Economic Development Board is a four-year term. It was recommended by the county executive that Paul Goode is reappointment, Larry Hinton is a reappointment, and Deanne DeWitt, Commissioner Deanne DeWitt, take the place of retiring Paul Decker. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Airport Authority has Camden McConnell that came off. It was a recommendation of the county executive that Dr. Bill Taylor filled that position. It was unanimous, and I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sumner County Library Board has a three-year term. Shelley Ames has served on that. She continues to want to serve on that. It's the county executive's recommendation. It was unanimous. I so move.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tourism Board's four-year term, that the reappointment with the county executive is Baker Ring. Leslie Shell has served, and Commissioner Shell has served, come off for Commissioner Shelley Tucker to be reappointed from the county executive. There was one deferral from Commissioner, retiring Commissioner Lamarb that will come in the next month, and Billy Gomenden, Commissioner Billy Gomenden, for a reappointment. That was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, seconded by Commissioner Sullivan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Delinquent Tax Committee, retiring Commissioners Kevin Palmeroy and Mike Atkins came off. The appointment from the county executive recommendation is Terry Wright and Luke Tinsley. Commissioners, I'm sorry, Commissioners Wright, Commissioners Luke Tinsley. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Echols. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Employee Benefits Committee, retiring Commissioner Bob Pospsil came off, and it was a recommendation of the county executive that Commissioner Justin Nipper take his place. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner DeWitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Liability Claims Committee, retiring Commissioner Paul Decker came off that, and Commissioner, it's the recommendation of the county executive that Commissioner Leslie Shell filled that position. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Rhodes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Local Emergency Planning Commission, retiring Commissioner Jim Vaughn has obviously come off that, and it was a recommendation of the county executive that Commissioner Michael Guthrie take that position. It was unanimous. I so move.
Motion made by Commissioner Goode, second by Commissioner Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Only for announcement, only to be decided on next month's meeting. For the Civil Service Board, two-year term. Regional Planning Commission, four-year term. Zoning Board of Appeals, the county executive will present those next month. We'll deal with that. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Mr. Goode for education.
No report.
Okay, thank you. Highway, Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure that everybody's on their meeting. We've got to move it back to, everybody's agreed to move it back to 4:30. And just wanted to let everybody know, but no report other than that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Graves. That meeting will be moved to, is it the first Monday, Mr. Graves? First Tuesday, first Tuesday at 4:30. Okay. Thank you. General Ops.
I just wanted to give a quick report on the project manager status for the judiciary buildings. That deadline ended on Thursday at noon for applicants. We did have five applicants submit information, and the committee will be going over those and hopefully announcing a short list and holding interviews on that soon. That's it.
Thank you, Michelle. Emergency Services. Oh, Ms. Kruger.
Have some emergency services people that went to North Carolina to, for hurricane relief, and I believe they are mostly back now. So, and we'll have some things coming up next month on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kruger. Legislative, Mr. Ring.
Yes, sir. The only thing, do you want to push your microphone or?
Yeah. Push your microphone. Hang on. All right. The only thing on the agenda is to recertify the 2015 Adventure Tourism District in Sumner County and create a new Adventure Tourism District for 2018. And I'll wait for motion, and I'll explain it. Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Goode.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shell. Okay, go ahead and explain it, and then we'll go to comments. This is something that has to be done every three years. This is basically a repeat of what we did in 2015, except it's added a few other areas that could be certified as, to be certified for Adventure Tourism Districts. Otherwise, it's basically a repeat of what we did three years ago. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ring. We'll go to Commissioner Mansfield first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to say, this is the first time I've ever heard of a Adventure Tourism District. So as much as I enjoy Adventure Tourism things, I did have a couple of just questions, or just, not more sort of questions, it's findings about it. And especially in this particular parcel, 395 Allen Road, being Bill Monroe's old property. I'd try to ask citizens in District 11, have you ever heard of this? Or other people, and nobody ever heard of this before. What is a Adventure Tourism District? I understand it's definitely not a rezoning of property or a request to be annexed in a city, but one thing that I guess that did cause me a little pause was that there is no requirement to alert adjoining property owners of what this kind of tourism district is. And for this particular property, it's about 244-acre parcel. When I spoke with the city of Goodlettsville, for something like that to be used, there would have to be an access road off of Law Hall Pike. There would have to be purchasing of private land by, I guess, the person there. It would have to be required of 25 persons to be employed full-time at this location, as well as to qualify as a tourism district. I think the state of Tennessee requires a $500,000 minimum in order to receive the benefit from the excise franchise tax deduction that they get. But this particular property, the main thing was just trying to find out if there's time to make citizens aware. Again, first time I've heard about it, trying to make my, talking to city leaders and understand a little bit more about what this is specifically. And so, what I was going to propose is if it's possible to defer to next month's meeting to give us time to go and talk to citizens, to let adjoining property owners know about this, educate the public as far as the potential impact of a Adventure Tourism District, how that might affect rezoning in the future, requests for rezoning, which I'm sure would happen, or have to happen in this case or anywhere else. But a lot of people can, you know, I started asking questions of people, and they think it's a rezoning, which it's not, but it potentially could be an open door for it. So I just wanted citizens to be aware of, do you guys want this? Do you not want it? And have an opportunity to really understand what this could mean for the community, and positively or negatively. So.
Okay. So are you making a motion, Mr. Mansfield?
Yes, sir. I'm moved to defer to next month's meeting to give some time to kind of get citizen input.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Mansfield to defer, second by Commissioner Mo Taylor. Ms. Denon, did you want to say something?
My understanding, my understanding was this was a request by the city of Goodlettsville, and unfortunately, the state requires us to act on this by September 30th.
Okay. All right. So defer is not, is not up for discussion, so we'll vote on this motion, and then Commissioner Taylor and Commissioner Ring and Mr. Holt are in the queue. Based on what happens on this vote, we'll come back to the queue on Mr. Mansfield's amendment. So a yes vote is to defer to next month, and no vote is to continue on with the main resolution.
Motion to defer is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With six affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry.
Okay. We'll go back to the queue. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Since this is not only to do with that property, it's recertifying the one that we did in 2015, I want to clarify a couple of things for myself. I want to make sure that this doesn't lead... I want to make sure that this doesn't lead to property being rezoned, or not rezoned, but property skipping the zoning process. I had an instance where we had a, in my district, Adventure Tourism part of my district, we had someone that didn't go through zoning. They went straight to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get a conditional use permit for, you could call it adventure. It was denied, but I just want to clarify that that doesn't have anything to do with...
This has nothing to do with zoning.
Zoning, planning.
This has something, it offers them, the property owner, if they seek it, some opportunities to promote growth and tourism in that area. It may be grants, it may be advertising dollars from the state tourism board. It has nothing to do with planning. They would still have to comply with all zoning changes, planning, any of those things, codes, all the things are already there.
But to echo also the concerns of the junior commissioner from the 11th District, you know, most of the people that are around these tourism districts don't know they're in a tourism district. So we need to do a better job of notifying the public. I don't know how we do that, newspapers, whatever, but just some concerns that have been brought to my attention, especially after what happened in our district, and some of the ones that were concerned thought this might be one of the reasons that what tried to go into our area was the reason for it. So just want to make some clarifications.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. We'll go to Commissioner Ring.
I'll defer to Mr. Holt in case, if there's anything else I want to say, I'll come back in later.
Okay. Mr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to talk about Adventure Tourism Districts. The state set this up three years ago, and this was allow individual landowners to go up and set up a, maybe a rafting, maybe a zip line, maybe anything in a rural environment to where they're within a zone. We're a Tier One County. Depending on what county you're in, would depend on what kind of tax credit you get and how high the bar is raised by the state. Tier One County, we're the highest level county. It takes a minimum of 25 full-time jobs and a half-million-dollar investment. Has nothing to do with zoning, has nothing to do with any individual in the county not knowing what goes on, because you would either have to go to the Planning Commission, as this gentleman referred to, to get a rezoning, or you would have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to get conditional land use permit. Then you'd have to meet all criteria to be able to do that. Now, in the whole state, this just allows you to set out districts. You can't blanket the whole county. You can only set up the Adventure Tourist Districts in basically rural settings to where it would work under their guidelines, and none of these have occurred so far in our entire state. And one of the reasons is they've raised the bar too high. So they're going to reexamine this. The city of Goodlesville did approach me, my office, and asked that we include this one area that has been spoken of tonight, which was fine, and that's what we did. The county is the only ones can approve this. If we don't approve it in a timely manner, we have to wait three years before we can go back and ask for an additional area. Now, to give you an idea of what we're talking about, if you're a Tier Three County, that's a minimum of 13 full-time jobs and a $500 investment, $500,000 investment. Tier Two Counties is actually 19, and Tier One, 25. No district has been used in the state of Tennessee so far, and I think we would be remiss if we didn't pass something to allow individual landowners the opportunity to go through a complete system to get these tax credits, because it will only enhance our county and allow tourism to come in. And that's really the most efficient way we can capture sales tax dollars, our dollars, to fuel our government services, because people come in, they spend their money, they leave, and they don't tax our services. So I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what this is about. This is not about rezoning. This is not about not letting the citizens know what's going on. This is about actually setting up areas in the county that can take advantage, private property owners can take advantage of these tax credits that was passed by our legislators. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my question is, as a landowner, is this a possibility any time that you want to do this? Is it a limited time, or is this a one-time deal? That's one of my questions.
Okay. Mr. Holt?
It is good for three years, and then we would have to recertify again. So if you're in the tourism district, your land is in that district. You have the opportunity to set up a business, take advantage of these tax credits for a three-year period, and after that, it has to be reapproved again.
Mr. Holt, how do I get into tourism?
Originally, we set these districts up by recommendation through our tourism board, and we just spread it out. We have areas of the county that are probably more economically disadvantaged than others. Westmoreland had some. There, I think there were some in Bethpage, there were some toward Portland, but you can only set up spots. You can't take a large area, say all the incorporated parts of the county, and incorporate it into an Adventure Tourism District. So you have to be strategic on how you do it, and there has to be some rhyme or reason, but that's where this came from. Recommendation through the tourism committee.
So these areas are already set up then?
They're already set up. We're reapproving these areas plus the subject area that you have a map in here that was a request from the city of Goodlesville.
How do I get chipped and rolled on this map now?
You can request it three years from now.
So it's too late now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Tinsley.
So for the record, I don't know if I missed this or not. So none of this is currently being used as such for the adventure property?
Right.
Okay. That was my question.
That's correct. Mr. Ring.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Just wanted to point out, from my understanding, these, any of these property owners could already do what they wanted to, could already do this even without the adventure zoning. They just wouldn't get the, if they're not in the zone, they're just not going to get the tax benefits and the potential of being given, getting possibility of some advertising revenue from the tourism board. So this doesn't affect anything that couldn't already happen. So it's just, is a benefit to the people, areas that are included in this if they choose to get involved in this adventure tourism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ring. Commissioner Mo Taylor.
Well, just, I don't know how to put this, but anyways, the 16 of you that was here prior to last month have heard me say this before. I'm just, you know, I would ask that, I hope that we could do things to where we're not coming down to the last minute, that we're, today's the 17th of September, and we have to have this in by the 30th day of September. So there's, you know, we're kind of over a barrel here that we don't have any choice. Either approve it, or you don't get included. So, I mean, it would be nice if we had a little time on projects such as this, like you've heard me speak before. And that's all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Taylor. Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question as far as what Commissioner Ring said about, if you can clarify for me, that these Adventure Tourism Districts, that there's nothing that they can't already do that could have been done before. So help me understand, the city of Goodlesville, for example, I was giving an example that it could be a concert venue or even a restaurant going in there, an access road coming off of Long Hollow Pike, which would open up a whole new realm of possibilities. How would that, under the current agricultural land use designation there, could they come and put a restaurant and a concert venue under? I don't understand, maybe I was misunderstanding the question or what he was saying, so I could get clarification on that.
Sure.
They would come to zoning and planning. They would...
You get your microphone.
They would present a PUD, they might present some sort of road option, all those things that would be necessary. But, for example, one of these that, originally, when this was talked about three years ago, I remember somebody talking about they were going to create a big pumpkin patch corn maze. And obviously, when they looked into it, it didn't, they couldn't meet the requirements for the zoning and planning piece of it. So it's just, it's just to give the person who owns the property a benefit if they want to partake of it.
That'd be a lot of employees for a pumpkin patch.
Commissioner Chris Taylor.
Call the question, sir.
Okay. Question's been called. Is there a second?
Second.
Question has been called and properly seconded. Let's vote.
Call for the question is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All 23 votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Call for the question receiving 19 affirmative votes is approved.
Okay. So we'll now go back to the main motion, and just to remind everyone, that motion is to approve the Adventure Tourism District for three years.
Resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting wishing to vote? Anyone wishing to change your vote? With 20 affirmative votes, a resolution is approved.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. Mr. Ring?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ring. We'll go now to Financial Management to Mr. Becker.
Yes, Financial Management, we met tonight at a regularly scheduled meeting. Mr. Lawing provided some information about some best practices and just sort of just give an advance notice that over the next month or two, he'll be presenting formal recommendations for us to approve and then approve at the full committee, full commission meeting here. And then also, we did elect chairman and vice chairman. I was reelected as chairman and Mr. Sullivan, vice chair, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. We will go to Budget, Mr. Chris Taylor.
Resolution 1809-02, make the motion for it. It's appropriating $160,000 for the Drug Task Force. What it boils down to is there's some new guidelines that govern them from the federal government, and that we have to put them in a different fund. It's pass-through money. It's nothing we have any say or do with other than just put our stamp of approval on it and move it for them.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Second by Commissioner Guthrie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Taylor.
Second one is the Resolution 1809-03. It's appropriating $50,000 as carryover from the general fund from fiscal year 2018. It's for ADA valuation. This is where we're required by the state to evaluate every building in the county to see if it's ADA qualified and usable. There's not much say on this one either.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Chris Taylor. Second by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Ah, we're adjourned.